You guys should work this out.
Just for everyone's information, our website is not working properly.
Wait, isn't that on the agenda?
Website itself or there's?
No, we're trying to connect. It says that it's not, it's not what?
It has to do with a security certificate.
Oh.
So if you try to log in and your personal computer has a heightened security sense, it might alert you, it'll stop you from logging in, but then it'll give you like a fine print down below if you wish to continue. Here and then work around it, but not many people, they're not too savvy here to know how to do that. So I just called Peter at the position and he's, he and Mike are.
And that would affect everybody who's going to the website to get our Zoom link and all that stuff.
Yeah, okay. Right, and our documents, right?
Yeah, but it's encouraging. We have at least Jennifer and Lieutenant McCall, so at least a couple.
A few minutes to see if it comes online or shall we go ahead and get started?
It's up, it's up to the council to decide. There is a clause on the agenda that says any kind of technical disruption does not hold on to the rest of the meeting. You know, that is the standard disclosure that we have. So if you want to be curious, we can wait five minutes, see what happens.
What would you prefer you that? Proceed, okay? Proceed pretty much unanimous, nodding your heads. All right, so we're going to go ahead and proceed and then we'll do our best to catch folks up if we need to on any same issue. So with that, let's call them in order to. Thank you. Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda. I believe Steve, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item. Where is it? Number five, I have yet to be able to connect with the city manager from Arcata. We've just been doing the email tag, so if we could push that to a future date. So I would move to approve the agenda minus item five.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we will move without that as well. Item two, approval of the minutes and minutes that we were, that were distributed are from February 28th. So they're on the website as of this afternoon and I actually have a hard copy if anybody needs one. And I think I have one correction unless anybody else, does anyone else?
And I wasn't there, so.
That's right, so you don't see. I only had one correction on page two under council comments by Kelly. It says pleased to discover that Murphy's Market sells cigarettes. And I think what I said was, I was pleased that to discover that Murphy's Market doesn't sell babe, they don't babes, they only sell cigarettes. I didn't want to go on record as being super happy about cigarettes.
And probably want to correct the spelling cells, but that's.
Yeah, and we did comment that the Chevron does sell babes, but I don't think that needs to be in there. It's, yeah. Correction. Anything else? Right? Is there a motion to? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any public comments up at February 28th? Meeting minutes. Is there any way to get the, the packet off Sunday? Or, you know, because by the, by the, I, my work schedule doesn't permit. Yeah, so I, like, get in the minutes this afternoon.
Yeah, we can deliver a hard copy. And with the planning commission, he puts them out in a, in the, in the glass case on Fridays and then they, the planning commissioners come and get it. If they want hard copies, come in.
But it's not just a hard copy. If I can get the.
Happy to.
I, yeah. Like Sunday, then that gives me a greater needed there. Yeah, so I think the packet was available on Friday.
Yeah, there are.
Minutes were this afternoon. So I think Katie's point is just if we can have those by Sunday and related, then then we can review them. Otherwise, maybe push them to the next meeting. So. Yeah. All right, thank you. I don't see any comments from the public on the February 28th meeting minutes. Although we are, because the website is down, I know folks are kind of coming online slowly, so just kind of keeping an eye out. But I think what we'll do is go ahead and bring it back and if there's any. Thank you.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right, aye.
All right. So we're going to move on to council reports and committee assignments. And Jack, can I start with the intro?
Just the logic I have to postpone the trails until the 18th of April, so. That all could be on by October.
Nothing to report?
I just have a very quick one. We had the meeting of the California National Monument Trinidad Gateway Room CC and M on March 9th. And just really quick, there's some pursuit of some research grants, studying seabirds, which I thought was very nice. There was a discussion about maybe having some sort of an urchin soiree of some sort, celebrating the urchins. Probably the biggest discussion was more around whales. So the concept of Trinidad having like a whale fest, Jason Self actually suggested that from the Trinidad kayak or kayak Trinidad. And so we discussed that. The, the feeling was it's a little late for this year because it's March through many of its whale migration season and we're a little late to plan an event, but then maybe that would be something we'd like to do next year. And that was kind of the big highlights, I think, for the relevant. Trinidad. But you, maybe you have anything to report? Okay, Jack?
Redwood Coast Energy Authority, they were talking about how P G N E is changing their solar rate structure. They call it NEM two to NEM three, which will be taking effect mid-April, April, April 15th. So if anyone was interested in getting solar before April, you could still have a good payback around seven years, but then after April 15th, payback goes to about 12 years unless you add a battery to the system. So if you're on the fence right now, it's best to lock in your contract in the next days to be grandfathered. Yeah, that's all I have.
Let's get to this. Thank you. All right, so next up then is staff report. So Eli, I'll turn it over to you for the city manager report.
And I'll turn it over to Lieutenant McCall.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I apologize. I'm in my car and I'm having some connection and Bluetooth issues, so I don't have great volume at the moment. So yeah, just a quick rundown stats from February, calls for service taken were down a little over 20 from the month of January, which equated to about a 12% reduction in calls for service. Reports taken stayed about the same. There was 13 in January, 12 reports taken in February. Two arrests in February, which was down from five in January. We had five felony investigations and two misdemeanor investigations. Looks like of these, we had one assault report taken in February. A couple of burglaries being a building or vehicle. Two vandalisms. I believe one of those, at least one of those is related to the reporting of the broken windows that occurred with the library and the museum and that area. Which was from the, I believe earlier in the month or previous month. Five general disturbances, one trespasser prowler call, two stolen vehicle, stolen vehicle recovery calls. And then pardon me, I lost my spot here on my page. We had four alarms, six patrol checks, one pedestrian check, eight suspicious person or vehicle type calls, nine unwanted or subjects or trespass camping type calls. And three traffic stops or vehicle investigations with a total of 132 miscellaneous calls in February, which was down from 165 in January.
All right, any follow-up questions for Lieutenant McCall?
Yes, I'm gonna ask you, what area does this report cover?
So it's, it's going to be the greater Trinidad area. It's not confined just because the way the system is when we pull those stats up. Since the zip code in that area covers more than just actual Trinidad proper and the city limits, it does include the, the outline Trinidad area.
I'm just gonna note to Lieutenant McCall that one of our residents had commented that if we could have the reports done like they in the past, this, and this is what he said. Suggestion is for city to ask the sheriff's office to return to their past practice underlining the Trinidad city calls for service on the report. I know that Margaret did that for a while for us, hearing the call of six months or what. But it's all possible. That would be helpful for our residents.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Again, my, my audio here is, is a little bit sketchy and I get a little bit of echo in that. I don't know if you could repeat it or if it's possible to have the city clerk or somebody just email me what the request was and I can see what we can do regarding that, whichever may be easier right now.
Yes, if there is the echo, it might be difficult. I'll try to repeat it one more time. Have an email sent. Suggestion by one of our residents to return to the past practice underlining the Trinidad city calls for service on the report. Margaret did it for a short period of time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm still having a kind of a difficult time understanding. If it's possible to have it emailed me to me, I could definitely try and sort out what, what the inquiry is and what's been done with the past and how we can address that to try and maybe do it in that format.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, thank you, Lieutenant McCall. I think then we're ready for Eli. Do you want to continue with your staff report?
Yeah. Hey, thanks, Lieutenant McCall.
Thank you.
So. In the packet, the city manager's report, the first thing I had mentioned in there was about the water main break. So in addition to what appeared in there, we had a meeting this afternoon on site in the rain. It's about an hour and a half. So Steve Allen, our city engineer, and we had Rod Sundberg from Rancheria present. And then there, there were a couple of representatives from Indian Health Services present. And a representatives from both GR Sundberg and also representative of Walling Construction. The discussion was centered on how we can prevent that issue that happened with water main break. And the suggestion was basically to have isolation valves placed on either side of where the water main break occurred. Indian Health Services is looking into being able to hopefully help cover costs. And also the county had been approached by the Rancheria to see if they can help with any repairs of the street in that area where the slide has been happening, which is the same place where slide had ended up affecting water main and it's like, I can't find. I'm sure information I received, there was crap and just pulling apart. I think it was basically. Also gave the Indian Health Services the bill from GR Sundberg to see what they can help cover. And also the gallons of water that we lost, if we were able to get any help from either the county or Indian Health Services, that would be ideal. Otherwise, we get submitted to our insurance company and see if it's possible to have it covered. I'm not sure if it is one of the things we have covered that we can request that. I mentioned in there also about issue to see funding. And we made a request for eighty-five thousand. And in there I did say that the good news is that we did file the application for funding in the the bad news is that there were over $15 million requested and there's only about one million available. Let's see what happens. Also Jennifer had prepared the business license update, SPR license update, which I included those numbers in the report. And then the mention in the report is website and Gerald and Gabe and I were looking at various options for the website yesterday with Civic, Civic Plus had presented to us as far as the look of the website. And so far, we're happy with the feedback we're getting and the work that apparently is being done by Civic Plus. So hopefully that will continue. And yes, I also mentioned in the report about water and staffing. And if there's any other questions or comments, entertain those.
Are there any questions for Eli? Right, any comments or questions on the staff report? Am I allowed to comment or ask a question? I believe so, yes.
I just wanted to comment on a lot of me. There was Ron Sundberg just said. Is that what I said? He said Brian.
Oh, I, I, I thought I said.
Maybe I, maybe I heard wrong. It was Ron. And there was damage to the resident below in that water. There was tremendous amount of water that went over the hill and hillside down near the ocean and I remember he was asking, could we, can we turn them to anyone? And I was getting to be down there today, so I thought I would bring that back. Yeah, if, if there is an insurance coverage on that, it would be amazing. We can have pictures, that kind of thing. But I'm very, very happy and pleased with the coordination and cooperation of all of us in health services that we called them anyway to come out and be responsive. Gerald was, was the regional representative and she, she did it, she up right on. She has 15,000 in temporary funds. And she said she would look at trying to cover that which costs less than the real patient above. And isolating out in that area to the county is not able to help at this time. They, they may come and put more asphalt on it, so it's not such a deep. But Director Puff Works Tom Mattson told me today that he did put in a disaster declaration project on that location, but it would be quite some time as we all know for those things. Those, you know, cost estimates can be down. We're definitely concerned about the continued slope. Restabilizing areas are overweighing it now and documenting that and making that part of it tonight. And if there's anything, Eli, if you can follow up, if there's any way to quantify the damage, we'll do that to that residence property. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I didn't want to, first of all, thank you, Jackie, because right away that morning after I discovered about the break in water main, she called and said that she had already contacted the county and also Indian Health Services. And, and again, they were present to staff. So, yeah, we'll see what we can do as far as that. What they did today is talk about the water that was coming down and we tested because there's still water coming down and we tested and identified that there's no chlorine in it. And, and then you can see all of the water that's just rushing down from the hillside because of all the rains. And I know specifically CR because I'm, because I do teach there. The, where they're located, they had to actually tell people to stay on campus today. Fortunately, it's spring break, but they told staff to remain in place because there was flooding in both directions when you left CR. So eventually they told them to take a leave.
And a tree fell over because the flooding wasn't enough. A tree also held the north exit, so.
But there's a lot of water that's just coming down in different places. But yeah, we'll check and see. We were also going to check about the 200,000 gallons that we estimated that we lost to see if our insurance company can help cover. Hopefully we'll find some money for all of these issues.
I hope so. Thank you. I don't see any other public comments on the staff report, so we'll go ahead and move on to items from the floor. At this time, members of the day, public can comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Individual comments will be limited to around three minutes or less. Please direct your comments to the council as a whole, maintain decorum and avoid personal attacks on staff members or the council or other members of the public. And council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. If that, are there any public comments? I almost should ask first if there are going to be any before I do the preamble. Okay, so I see no items from the floor, so let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. And are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda or any motions?
No, I just said the public comment.
Yes. Are there any public comments with regard to the consent agenda? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council for motion.
And we'll accept the. Yeah, for the more. All right.
Is there a second? And all those in favor? All right, the consent agenda is approved. And that brings us to tonight's first discussion in action agenda item, which is the discussion and decision regarding highway safety improvement program, project proposal for guardrails, crosswalks and striping. And then I think, are we going to combine? Well, we'll do, we'll get to traffic calming. Are we going to combine them? Okay.
No, separately, we have the one and then.
Separately, okay, sorry. I was going to ask if we should go ahead and include traffic calming. So with that, Josh, I guess I'm turning it over to you. Is that right?
Yeah.
Could do my ones to right to the preamble. Okay, great. We'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. Person after number of years. Yeah, thank you, Gabe, for bringing that up. So yes, what I'll do today is just give you a project update so that you can on the city's each cycle in projects. I'll be pretty brief. Obviously, if there are questions, I go, if you'll bring it up down, you know, the end, your way is fine. Because this project has been going on for a couple of years now. We're at the point where environmental work is now complete. Wrap it up, the design work, wrap it up, the roadway work, anticipate taking the project, the Caltrans, make it approval, skip rest of the construction in the comments. So I want to provide you an update. Also say that this will be a lot of time to be able to look at this. Will we do solicitation contract? If we do, then bring back council for approval of actually the contract. All right, so yes, here's a, this is a presentation outline. It's going to be pretty brief. We'll do a quick project overview, talk about funding. And I want to spend some time going through the various project components, talk about the next step, if any questions you may have. And before I go on, I do acknowledge a colleague here who, Penny, who's got a lot of work in Trinidad over the years, and you've been here in the past. She's been on this project. So here's a, just a overview of the project and most of the information here is something you just probably seen in the staff form pretty quickly, but again, in November of 2020, the city did submit three separate applications to Caltrans Highway Safety Improvement Program, the CSG program ten. Different set aside components. So the CSG program has a set aside program, which is really specific countermeasures that the state and other government that found are pressing terms. So sometimes these grant projects, for a broad, you can sort of apply for different components. In this case, it's very specific. Under this program, there's three different components. There was a tribal component, obviously, CSG wasn't helpful for that, but these are the three components. First one, another for each, these a little bit more detailed. The first one is installing edgelines. Edgelines on the road, it also includes some stripe, some centerline striking improvements, some other side stripe improvements. Second here is corridor improvement. So this is area targeted, a pretty consistent guardrail system. So it's not for new guardrail systems. It's only upgrade or replace existing systems that are outdated and they're curving. Last one is the pedestrian crossing enhancements. So these are either improved to existing crosswalks or it could be improved to new crosswalks, create new crosswalks of with the striping, the rapid, the rectangular rapid flashing weekends. Crossing signs, you're actually have right up for the town hall here. Curve extension, replacement or upgrades to curb runners that are non-compliant, also strike in marketing. But then in March of 2021, CSG was notified of all three applications for. Funding for the project. Projects, and also one of those three separate projects, the safety implementation outcomes on the city. So now we'll just get into the various improvements. So first one up is the edgeline improvements. So again, this is primarily focused on edgeline, it does allow for setting on striping. Some other signage improvements. On these roads, it's science, pretty updated, it'd be very creative. Retravel is free for activity. That's all, that's important for this project. So there's three different areas. The edgeline structure is focused on, first up, stagecoach roads, essentially from the main street area, extreme intersection of the state limits and off far. You know, stagecoach is pretty narrow, so it'd be pretty limited, really just edgeline striking. It's not lined up with the centerlines. If I put an edgeline strike, it's just so narrow. The wider stability is on. Except the west side drives, the skid, most of the segment essentially from the wide ramps. For the centerline strike, along with safety drives, we'll replace that, add that, pitch and stretch as well. And the bosom striking, the crews running boats on Trinidad Friday road. That road, true, no, it's a very wide road. That road, through the, it's a very wide road, or it is centerline strike, no, it's wide strikes. The fact is actually bad, the edge line strike is actually narrow the travel lanes a little bit. Make, make, make it feel a bit narrower, depending on vehicles driving a little bit slower, optimizing for bicycles, pedestrians, that means under the road. Place the centerline strike again, and that's the size, and I want to point out that uh, much of this component of the work that the Trinidad part of the road is actually counted rather than this, so the application was put together, it was a collaboration. Putting a local highway that city right away on front of road, so we asked them to give us the full thing. Uh, so we are working with them, we are able to be approached from them, talk a little bit more about that later, because it's going on the project. I'll support that. I just want to prove that the approvals do, so that's it's in, in county right away to serve the city.
But that's just on a fronted road?
That's fronted road, there's a, there's a guardrail crew, that's also down right there.
Okay.
What's the slide? All right, so the guardrail, uh, great, so there's essentially four locations, three of them are within the city limits. Uh, let's start with the state limits, these are on senior drive, they're along south, we've got roads, it's There's one set of, of guardrails, it's actually just more of the city limits on, actually one for. Very close to saying, but you just outside the city, that's, um, so yeah, that one. Liberation of the county, that, we actually, we actually does ask that we didn't include. Uh, the county does participate in this program, they actually and to invite local agencies in and enable actually the program, along by some agencies in, so they can pick up their guardrail work, uh, but their program is maxed out, went out for this grant, so we asked that we could simply. Also point out, I'll, and the, the grant is actually under, so it wasn't seen that. So now I want to run through the pedestrian crossing enhancements. Uh, and there are three locations shown here, doing their, for newer enhanced crosswalks. Uh, the markings. Program retrofit will be including, currently including base standards, installation of RREs. Highway extensions, very sign, sign enhancements. Locations, Main Street View, Edward Street, Hector Street. Edward Street, go into Street, and all of those. This is Main Street and View Street. Um, so currently actually, this intersection, there are two uses, crosswalks and the one across. Have one, one, crossing Main Street, uh, the crosswalk, this is against the boat. West side of View Street, um, have a trailer park, and this section of the place exists, right, which will have the curb ramp there, and that will comply with certain media standards. They're on the opposite side of the intersection, from the summer, plaza, the building, the curb ramp, I'm actually also planning to apply some that one as well, it's actually have two set of curb ramps, one in each direction, crosswalk. And then we're in a very subtle, well, it's helped. A little bit of a comedy, but this current, also helped shorten crossing distance, so build up for North Road. With the seat center, and then also allow vehicles to see the question.
Are you proposing signage there as well, or just markings on the road?
Yes, so it's part of that, we're also, also proposing to put in RREs, so that the, uh, you can put one crossing, just like, you know, air, if you want, each side of the road, dual sided. Make it a technical, and see how here, the size is a little different because this is a school zone. Essentially the same. That's crosswalk, crosswalk markings replaced. Um, well, you know, right, right.
Okay. Talk about trying to keep the larger vehicles on Main Street and not have the view of the main. That'd discourage their vehicle going down the road, but they have
No, not, not as part of the. I mean, in fact, we're putting out, you see the burpees, burpees markings and the somers, plazas, and we um, related monetary balance to restrict truck access, and on, diligence, but closely make sure that a lot of the RREs proposing, it is very subtle. Um, so that can't cause us a problem. All right, so now, uh, Edward Street and Hector Street, and as I mentioned, there's two different, uh, projects on Edward Street, so it's, uh, further west, uh, as you know, there is a sidewalk on Edwards, it currently ends at Hector. Any on Edwards? Say, essentially a plan here, where this goes, pedestrians walking down, you can get the crosswalk. Uh, most, that seems nice, you're just going to cross. And walk on the south side, which is shoulder there, it's a party. Uh, so that works, times, historically, then we take advantage uh, so kind of different. Uh, data when this was first proposed, the dam and trail is still actually a new project, we forward, so the thought of this is going to let's say, doesn't this company supervise a lot of that. Also moving here. Crosswalk. Let's get a new crosswalk, we replace the curb ramp, the curb ramp also, not applying curvy media standards. Uh, and again, the RREs, so this is the side, the side. Can do a, uh, photo simulation, essentially comparison of what the visiting conditions are like on the left and then what shows what issues look like on the right, so pretty subtle, uh, obviously there's some additional crosswalk striking markings on the right side. Uh, those diagonal. Title markings, right where the cursor is, it's a chart key, it's where the essentially field lines. Vehicle mostly built now, engine, people use crosswalk, but provides a little bit more answers to this ability to crosswalk. And then obviously, there probably are the signs. Uh, so this is Edwards and the windows, so, um, next, next intersection down, again, there is a sidewalk on window streets, about the window. And then it ends, uh, on Edward Street, there is a, is a curb ramp there, but they're looking anywhere. History would give, is that curb ramp? It's, there's, okay. Enter to crosswalk. Avenue. Parts two, I want to point out, see this diagonal, past areas, for portioning the street, so there is currently parking there, on street parking, part of this, we need to read that parking. Provide enhanced facility pedestrians, if there is a car approaching in that area, people, if you cross the road, it increases visibility. Uh, but we did take a, a really detailed look at all the work in on Edwards. And we did find that it was very minor reductions with curbing, some specific areas, we can actually offset the lost parking here.
The RRE, that's the, is that a flashing?
It's, yeah, it is.
Like that?
It's just like, yeah, so the rectangular. It's the bottom of the class. So the tower.
Okay, thank you. So it's flashing. Yeah, and, and does the, did you look at the, um, option of having like one crosswalk versus two, since it's a barely, I mean, we've gotten some public comment. One was to do just one, and I had been kind of thinking about that. I got another public comment where someone said, oh, I like two, so I think you probably.
Yeah, I can address that, you, you know, where we look to put these kind of couple places, one is, you certainly want to put the people across. And it may stand, but then we're crosswalks, or sidewalks, because that's where you're either being on the shoulder, or both those locations that, that, the other thing you do is when you look at crosswalks, uh, we want to put them where vehicles expect to be, physically crossed. And that's usually an intersection. So if you're ever going to put a crosswalk, then the first thing you go is what to do with the intersections. Otherwise, it's called mid block crossing, those are, those have higher safety concerns, pedestrians are really expecting people just to be crossing. It's, you can do it, you should, it lasts, it's a work. I would absolutely, this, yes, you do have two, three, two intersections, you know, sidewalks that essentially, and yes, a certain time, you can, you know, it's considered.
You went to one, it'd have to be between the intersections, it sounds like, and so this way we're covering both intersections.
I mean, if you want to, I heard these, so, um,
Well, this one makes sense because people like to walk against traffic, right? So when I come up that hill, I'm just drawn to cross there because I want to walk against traffic, so yeah, I think this one makes pretty good sense.
Yeah, the other reason this one is, it's hard is a lot of people can make connections to Green Lab as well.
Right.
So it provides connection with Green Lab, down to the heart. Um, it gave a lot of people also part of the north side of the road. Perfectly, people cross the road, they get into their destination.
And our next item, which will be traffic, but, uh, certainly having two crosswalks interferes the traffic.
Slowing things down.
What I add is we look at the trails, and try to develop trails on them, that actually looks like a really nice way to have the trails, uh, coming together in these areas, areas to cross over. Getting over that side. Well, it's good for the trail, well, we want to do trails too, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. So the window going out to the, passing Marine Lab to the state trail, and then the connection to the.
Crosswalk, then you can go up, then you can cross back in. That, that, uh, corner is a blind corner, so a lot of trucks and cars get a lot of speed and then they make a quick right.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful to have like a light, if some president invited to go across the street, it'd be helpful to have like a light before they make that right turn, because then they'll know, hey, it's so blocking.
Yeah, no, we, we, we certainly acknowledged right when we put this application together, that there's sight visibility issues on that corner, and so part of the work, we also look at, um, you know, the white way, city right way versus private property. And hard to tell. Uh, right here, that's actually the city right way. It's an edge of the road. So there's a big swamp in here that is actually city right way, and that's where there's a lot of hedges are built up, so it's part of this project, uh, those hedges are actually, it's got to be trimmed out. Yeah, built. These are double sided signs as well, so if people are coming up the road, even though they may not see the sign that's on their side of the road, they will be able to first see the sign itself on the side. That's another, just that put simulation, right side of the visiting conditions. It's, sorry, the visiting condition, right side is proposed conditions, uh, similar to the saw for the condition on crosswalk markings. I said, I uh, triangle, truck key, you know, lines, lines, parties, signs, and you can see where the party will be restricted. And as far as next step, so, uh, as mentioned, and I think you've talked to your staff. Staff report, like the ninety percent of the office was recently completed. Uh, we're in the process of court aid, the county, um, to the security improvement permit. Expect to have that enabled. Finalized design, a little bit, so I think the construction from upgrades. Yeah, advisements. It'll be in the June time period, or if we're going to bring back counsel for the war, talking in July. The plant construction, shoot this our place up. Just stated just a couple of last things.
Any other counselors, any other questions for Josh?
So exactly, so you're saying that, uh, it will start late summer? And only a couple of months to complete the understanding. Before the end of the year.
Yeah, most, most of the work, we do not a lot of concrete work, there's a little bit, it's, you know, the it, very quickly, um, in the completely separate, we put the guardrails, the signs, so the three different things, so. Especially your, I mean.
Another question is, uh, a little tangential, um, sidewalks, I'm new to the area and I'm curious about the sidewalk here and sidewalk over there, they don't what is the, uh, the rationale of the one, was there?
I didn't put, put.
Sidewalks.
For sidewalks, for the lack of connectivity between them? Great question. Which I didn't.
Uh, my understanding is that over time, various entities were in favor and not in favor of sidewalks, and so what you're seeing is a representation of bits and pieces of sidewalks being put in and other places, people didn't want sidewalks.
There's so many.
Yeah.
It's just standard that there are a lot of, it's not like their house, but the city wasn't going to put it there, so the homeowners were required to pay for sidewalks to put in front of their house. So that was another reason to showcase it. I've got a question too, at the end, uh, in front of the road, there's that circular area, I think eventually we're going to have a trail that goes up a little, something paint that up, or you know what's going to happen?
You know, I, I were conversations with the land trust, that we, they're looking at that area potentially with the county.
This is the north end of the front road?
This is the north end where the county, you said county's got to go do the rest of that, and they were going to take that on, so I think they have a little license.
I think it's something Land Trust is looking at, that, um, a little bit of here, locations. Got some applications to turn around. Fire. Yeah.
I just thought of something else, I'm on scenic drive, so the edge lines, I think I know, they already know the answer to my question, but when we put the edge lines, is there any room left for pedestrians? Or are they just going to be like right along the edge of the asphalt?
The runway may don't see it, it was already done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this application before the city actually just installed the edge lines on the city, that was one of those in partless.
All right, let's move to public questions and comments for, uh, Josh. Please, Jackie.
I just had a question, Josh, uh, I thought I heard you say crosswalk at the harbor, but it's not really at the harbor, it's on that turnway before you go down to the harbor.
Yeah, it's actually just one here, so it's, it's, um, that's the window.
Okay.
And Edward, yeah, what I'm saying is the farm is inspired to be, to to.
And we're, um, planning to go to construction on our stormwater project this summer. Uh, while fingers crossed everything works right. We'll have a crosswalk from the board rock over to where the lighthouse is, that we put in as part of that project. So that'll be helpful there. This one, and on, on the, um, scenic drive, the guardrail location, just set on Franchria property. No, connected to that's.
Yeah, um, can you mind going back to the guardrail? So it's first here, it's shown in, um, their bottom, so it's reusing guardrails, all the same, to drop. Turn, turn one each side. Those get replaced.
Okay.
So this is, this is just.
Okay.
And then it looks, uh, Cameron Reese, I believe, has her hand up. Karen, do you have a question?
I do, hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm sorry I'm late to the meeting, but I live on, at three ninety six Ocean Avenue. Is this part of this overall plan by chance?
I think this Ocean Avenue is part of.
No, there's no, it's supposed to.
So so Ocean Avenue is not part of any safety upgrade for the commu, for this town?
Well, we are going to talk about. Well, we are going to talk about traffic, traffic calming next and, uh.
Okay.
Discuss any potential options.
Okay, that's great. Cause I would have to say for any upgrade, which I think everything that's happening in this community is so deserving. However, Ocean Avenue is a main feeder out of the community. And I can only tell you what I see outside my door every day as far as speeding, cars. It's, I, it's unsafe to walk down. So I'm just hoping that as a soon to be probably a main feeder, if everything is taken care of in every other street. Ocean Avenue is going to become an e- easier target for people to escape without any controls. We don't even have a, you know, a speed limit sign on this street. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you for your comment and we will, we'll talk more about that as well in a minute. So.
Thank you so much.
Give another public comment about that as well. So. All right. Other public comments for Josh or questions? Let me see, because of the presentation. So if you guys. All right. We see no other public comments. Oh, Patty.
The, uh, this is out, the stop signs and for that you get Edwards. Do you sort of require an engineering department to have those really impacting plastic in? Flags on top of the stop signs? Stop sign?
I think it's for those signs.
Have really lovely, you have the.
Yeah. So you put those up in the stop, your stop sign added in there seconds.
So we can just take those as.
Yeah.
There, yeah. Thank you.
You're right, Patty. I don't like the.
One more thing, the, I hear Will Val mentioned again, we. Everybody knows we're having a little parking, parking, oh, we should add it. So this is involved out. Isn't that going to take away? Do you have another parking?
Uh, is your, this is why I'm.
And you're, you're taking, you're taking away red paint and putting something else on. So we can park that Edwards and what are the more.
Yeah. So we did a review of all the red curb paint on Edwards, uh, and it's pretty inconsistent. So we found there are some locations where really just take out, say five, the red curb. Um, you can't make a whole additional town.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So maybe we can have public works take from eight five off. Okay. Since we're allowed to do that now.
Yeah.
Um, all right. So. So this, uh, this was a received presentation and discussed, we, the council is not taking any action per se. Um, and I think everyone's gotten their questions. So thank you, Josh, for that. And with that, we'll shift then to the next discussion, which is the discussion of the, um, residents request for traffic calming on city streets. And so I don't know, Eli, do you want to pick that one off or should, is Josh going to cover that as well?
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a prior about sustaining a couple of years ago. It was mentioned about having to track on as a future agenda. So we tried at the time that Josh was here, since he had a transportation. And figured that he can help with, you know, as far as, uh, you know, what potential remedies we prefer. And, and what, uh, has the county or other communities. Some of these potential. Turn to your job.
Yeah. So for this one, how do you prepare? I understand it'd be more of a question and answer. Um, better understand sort of what, what the concerns are. Have to answer your question, but if you hear what the concerns are, I think we can be able to better, uh, find out some potential solutions.
Okay. Thank you. So we, we heard from, uh, one community member, Karen Reese, that Ocean Avenue is a kind of an ongoing concern. Um, and that's been echoed, um, in other public comments that ocean and view. Um, are kind of alternate ru- routes for the main road. And so one of the things that's come up a lot, Josh, is traffic humps. Not bumps, I guess, which are the, you know, steeper, but the, the, you know, kind of maybe putting in temporary traffic humps. And then also, uh, putting, um, uh, you know, lettering on the road that. About the speed limit or those kind of, I think those are some of the suggestions that we've heard. So.
Dave, if you don't mind, could you share that? Station again, and then slide at the end. Let's see that. Uh, keep going on, it's a very nice line. Yes, we did. You know, this, this is just a brief overview, see, I'm totally, you know, advice that they can send to help with this. They are located, um, typically are on low volume, low speed roads, really not very appropriate for. Throw fares, Irish B roads. Reaching cost kind of in the money you're doing. Down. So the advantage of them is that you're like that. Maybe also tend to reduce. Driver's law for these roads, other roads, such that you know. Fair. Advantages of adjacent levels, um, it's push the problem over to another residential road. This is pretty strategic on news. Whether it's. Requires additional signage striking, trade that is just a bit of a sensitive subject over here. So just know you need to add some, some signage striking. Certainly concerns with, uh, with voice. Two folds, the, of cars moving over, listing up of the suspension class that you're seeing. Then people. That sometimes will be something. Something to be aware of in the community, if you use them. Just an issue, there's also an issue with vibration. I know it's a city arcade ad issue. Your. Litigation owners, we don't. Some vibrations. Just call them structured and all you can see. Where there are, certainly. They just do it. It's slightly variated, requiring all of that. Part of the business, this is, it's the, uh, sign. Last whole there, longer versus vehicle response time. I did see the public comment. It's agreeing on that. I assume this does come up, that it does slightly slow down.
So one thing that I've seen is that, um, more communities, because of the reasons you mentioned, trying them out temporarily with the, I guess, the made from rubber. Instead of like hard rubber instead of cement. And so it minimizes the vibration potentially. I don't know if you, do you have any experience with those?
I haven't seen speed pumps like that. I've seen speed bumps, which were much smaller. Those tend to be very risky.
Uh, cause I thought it was about, but maybe.
Excuse me. Uh, yeah, I live on ocean also. So I echo what Karen said. Uh, but if not the, uh, speed pumps, uh, what can, uh, the, all the recreational vehicles love ocean. They come around and there's a big truck pulling them and then this house following them and sometimes a car following the house. With them down there. What can?
Um, you know, I mean, what I've seen other, some other cities do is certainly reduce residential roads to local traffic only. To process, make that happen. Um, I'm assuming probably would take an ordinance and some changes to see that. A couple with things like. Bikers at the end of the streets related to disturb vehicles that.
Doctor, ready remedies.
What about weight limit? I know we've discussed in the past that both view and ocean, because of the, you know, the tendency to try to avoid. Main Street and Trinity. To go down ocean, but you know, delivery truck is obviously much heavier than the passenger vehicle. Can we use our weight restriction, something that is easy to apply or is that back to city ordinance and, and that kind of thing?
I was, I was going to defer to Eli. Dave on that, I would think that.
I was just thinking.
Can that be done?
Right. But to me, it seems like you're doing it because the asphalt can't handle it, right? I've seen where, you know, trucks run down some street that just tear it up because it's not engineered for, for large vehicles. Is that, but I'm just curious if that's even sort of in our bag of tricks that we can apply to.
It's something I'll look into.
Okay.
Certainly designated trucker out. City trucks.
Yeah.
RVs, some of the big RVs have actually been trapped. There's a couple of the, a couple of the traps I can. But signs have to say no large RVs, certainly not appropriate, but you sure, no RVs. And bigger than just a lot of these searches. Is that something I can begin or do you have seen that?
I'll, I'll, I'll look into it. And if there's a great suggestion, I'll, I'll, so with folks, I'll review the codes.
So length, length limit and weight limit. And then just a simple ordinance assess local traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty slick actually.
A condition enforcement, again, would be tough, but. It's easy.
Doing nothing will guarantee that. Nothing will change if we do something.
Is there, is there a way, a place for people to turn around, like the trucks that go to Murphy's, for example? So if we say they can't use ocean and view, which I totally agree with, but as they, as they go, where else would, I guess they'd have to go down with the harbor and turn around, right?
As I understand it, they, the Murphy's trucks just back in and leave, but I don't live. That's true.
I think some of them do. You guys get a lot of commercial traffic on, on the RVs. It's mostly RVs. Excellent. Well, not excellent, but good. And we can handle it.
Is it thus? Bus was come.
No, no.
Now they headed to the church and. All right. I didn't know about, you know, I just took a month or a year, I still, I didn't know paying that far.
I think one other suggestion that someone gave, as long as we're tossing out ideas and then we'll go to, um, back to public for more was, um, a member of the public said, uh, could you, um, paint the, you know, the speed limit on the road? Does that help at all or? In your experience or no? No, it's on my.
You've answered.
You've answered for so.
Okay.
You could probably made it better if you practice so.
Like fifteen, you know, ten or fifteen mile an hour number. Because they go down, it's twenty-five, thirty, it doesn't help. With, with an RV the size of.
Yeah. And all seriousness, if we don't have any speed signs at all, then I guess we cannot enforce them. So today it says twenty-five, right?
Well, someone said, said that there wasn't on ocean. Uh, I mean, I, I thought that we're on both.
Yeah. I guess we should look. So maybe we.
No, there's not, there's not. I live on ocean. I swear. There's no speed limit sign on Ocean Avenue.
Okay. And Karen, while we're, we'll open up to public comments. Is there anything you else you wanted to add?
Well, I, I sure, so is the vibration from the speed humps? I mean, I'm willing to be a pilot project and even put some money in. I, I just think that first off, speed limit signs do help because when I walk down and I try to slow people down, what do I point to? There's nothing to point to. They're, they're like ready to run me down. And I'm like, okay, I don't even have a speed limit sign on this street to point to or. So, you know, I, I think that is at the very least, we need that. And I'm willing to be a pilot, you know, I kind of live almost across from AT&T. So not, you know, I bet that area, th- those folks would partner with me if we want to plan or try to pilot a speed hump. Vibrations, I, I just, I would like to be part of the solution and I'm just offering up my frontage road here to help solve this problem.
All right. Thank you. I, I, I think you're not alone in that. Aaron Hakenan had also offered the same on view. So, um.
What about, uh, putting lines on both sides and a middle line in the middle? Because that would make people think it's not so fast and slow people down.
It's like a one way.
Yeah. Like seven line. Yeah, seven line with a stripe on the side. That would make you not drive so.
And I think Ocean does actually have edge lines, if I recall. I just don't think they're seven lines.
And I thought it was too narrow for.
That's kind of like.
But you can't have edge and center on that street.
You know, it might be. Minimum width.
So, and it sounds like we've got some options. So I, I think we need to, we've agreed that we need to look at what kind of ordinances the city needs to do to address some of these concerns. And like weight and length and, um, and, and provide some restrictions potentially for RVs, recreational vehicles. And we talked about looking at the speed limit signs that we have. So it sounds like we're missing some speed limit signs and maybe we need to look at that on view and or ocean. And then. Either is, okay. Okay. So ocean, it sounds like there is not according to one of the residents. And so we need to look at that. And then, and then I think that the speed humps have come up quite a lot. So I think we should at least think about if there's a temporary option and how much it costs. And, um, I'm happy to kind of help do some research on that because I thought I saw that there were humps, not bumps, but we'll, we'll check and see.
And I really appreciate this, this comment you made that, that, you know, some cities will actually get the residents to, to buy into it. Right? We've had two offers to have speed humps in front of their house, but there are other people that it affects. I say we start with, with the offers and see how they work.
Yeah. So if we have citizens who are willing to kind of take the, the risk on that and, and, you know, see how it affects them. Um, I do understand that there have been some issues with vibration and stuff. So I think that be mindful of that, but.
Yeah. So the other, the other measures from others, red, that signs in the past.
Yes.
Um, you can go to this one. This actually, I think in councils, few years ago, there was a proposal, we had a couple. Sure. See, you're simply. It's, yeah, I should see the limits. Yeah. That positive night. If they are. Say, trade out, reduce the law tours. You may not see that as much. The tourists, the residents.
Yeah, those are, I seem to see those a lot on, you know, kind of high, high traffic streets, you know, main streets and things like that more. Um, someone did ask about getting, uh, one of the ten, the portable types, um. I don't know if you'd want to do that on ocean and view versus on the main drag during, you know, peak season, but that's another suggestion. All right.
And regarding the, uh, the sign, uh, when the. Years ago. Turned in the street. I was actually thinking about roughly where my office is because, uh, once people slow down for the school, then right after the school, they seen the floor, you know, until they get towards Edward Street. And, and, and that's where I really hear it, you know, in between there. And I just get concerned about if somebody just, you know, accidentally steps out and then.
Yeah.
That someone can't react with them. And, and sometimes even like commercial vehicles do the same thing. You know, the, you know, I won't name specifically, but, but there is one that I see doing that on a regular basis.
Maybe part of this too is to talk about, you know, police enforcement or enforcement by, you know. The speed limit a little bit more. So that could be a tangential discussion as well.
Yeah. Plus specific security or whatever.
Exactly. As we decided, private security can help us. So. All right. Thank you. Great discussion. I think, uh, there's nothing else. All right, thank you, great discussion, I think, uh, there's nothing else, we'll. We'll go ahead and move to the next item, thank you very much, Josh, really appreciate it.
Now I'm here and I can only give you comments.
Yes, so we'll open to.
Happened to be in luck, since I got a. Resident of Ocean Avenue since nineteen eighty-three, so I can tell you all about us. Been going on on Ocean Avenue. Um, and yeah, there has been a big increase in, uh, the amount of through traffic using that street, it's basically since the. Traffic calming devices were put out here, uh, by the crosswalk at the school. I think, uh, I was just looking at that today actually because. I think what's happened is the. Between the colored signs in the center of the road and where the curb kind of protrudes out on each side of the crosswalk. If the driver, you know, even in a regular car, you're kind of like, wow, I gotta thread the needle here and, you know, make it through this. The, the bigger trucks and the RVs and stuff, they just. They, they don't want to deal with that at all, so they go down. Other street. We used to have a fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign on Ocean. And I'm pretty sure there was a no truck sign at one point too. Remember you? Since by then. You know. Sure what happens with it and then. So I'm glad you're thinking about it, trying to figure out some kind of remedy for that. To just get people to put down and enjoy. Enjoy life, enjoy the day, enjoy being in Trinidad, don't be in such a burden without a feeling. Great thing about. I do that, so. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Bryce.
And actually, can I, can I bring Josh back up, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So Josh, just, I mean, you could stay there or not, we can all hear, but this. Again, going back to, to view and ocean, especially ocean. Right, if it's too narrow to have. A center line. Is it not also too narrow to have an oversized vehicle? Right, so if, if you can't get two cars to do this. You know, within the lines, can you have a truck and another car, can you have? I'm just, I'm, again, I'm looking for, I've been hearing this, this comment about ocean and experiencing it. And it seems that ocean. Just shouldn't have trucks on it. Right? It's too narrow to have a center line, how could it be narrow, wide enough to, to accommodate a large vehicle, so.
It is too narrow, you're so right, you're so right.
I'm just, and again, I'm just asking because here the traffic.
Yeah.
Here, right?
From there.
Yes. Okay.
So I would certainly help support the creation of an ordinance that we.
Yeah.
Have, you know, saying, saying of view, I don't know if view, I think is wider, but, um.
Yeah, but it's just exchanging one problem for another, because then. East and west and all the other stuff is not really accommodating to large trucks either, yeah, so. Okay, I just. I'm, I'm just like, there's kind of be an easy way that we could just solve this problem with existing rules. But, I mean, an ordinance may be what, the way we need to go, maybe these speed humps. If we can get some traction on putting a speed hump in. On view and, because I'm gonna just say it, right, if, if you're saying, and it makes sense that if we slow down traffic on Trinity. They've moved to view, to ocean. If we slow them down on ocean, they're just gonna move to view.
Yeah.
So let's, as a council, say, let's do it all so that we can really measure this thing.
That's right.
And do a pilot speed hump on both view and ocean. I get that backwards.
Yes, exactly.
Direction you see traffic. On those streets, is there a dominant direction, like a north, north or south, or both?
I, I see both.
Yeah, that's both.
And I, I, please don't hurt me or in any way throw anything at me, but I know the discussion has come up about one way on view and ocean. As a resident on those streets, is that palpable? Palatable?
Yes, yes, yes.
Right?
Yeah, so that would be an interesting thing to think about too, so. Good point.
But you'd still have the same amount of traffic, you just.
Well, but.
A area of split, went out of town, yeah.
But a speed hump on going one way, you don't have to worry about. Opposing vehicles. You know, pedestrian, right, heaven forbid you'd have a dog on that street, walking your dog. And two cars are trying to pass, Bryce, you live on the street, what's, what's your thought on a one-way?
We thought about that, are you saying, uh, both of them would be one way, go in the same direction, or one going? One direction or one the other?
In my little mind, I'm thinking one goes one north, the other one goes south, just for. Yeah. I don't know, I, I guess it.
Think that would do much to deter people from using those. As alternative routes, because they would just choose one when they come into town. And the other, they're moving down.
Right, right, but I guess I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm thinking about is the, the two vehicles opposing each other and trying to squeeze into that little tiny space, but.
Yeah, well, that.
Yes. Maybe that's not as big an issue as the speed is.
Because that does force people to slow things down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You mentioned there are commercial trucks.
Oh, yeah.
I, I did one of those. Yeah, I was just, no, like, when I. Uh. Wait, is, and, and it is sort of like. A little higher than the middle. You know? Which I think if, if we did go one way, it would make people sort of like just go right down the middle and maybe pick up more speed, just because they know they have to. Be on one side or the other.
Okay.
I, I, I think Josh is the expert and we've given him a lot of good things to think about, and we asked you to come back, you know, in. I don't know, a month's time or a couple of months and, and give us your thoughts on some of these suggestions, Josh, and. And then the city can, you know, kind of, we can get to kind of a decision about what we, the things that we could try, because it sounds like we're unanimous that we, we hear. That we need to do something, okay, and then I have, uh, last public comment, uh, Jackie has something to add.
I'm just. Thinking about how to. Look at everything collectively, you can't just look at one street or another. And you might consider a public event, a shred event. Um. Ooh, pardon me.
Go, sorry, you're up.
No.
You could do, you could pop up events, so you could, you could do something where you connect down a component of the road, this is a temporary. Improvement and see how it works.
Yes, yeah, it'll work, so try.
And, and, you know, just have the forum for folks to come in and give your opinions, so you look at it all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a good one for that, so that's a great.
If you go into an ordinance, I think it'd be a really good idea to do more planning.
And I mean, just a thought I had along those lines, thank you, Jackie, that's a great suggestion, was, um, I don't know whether this is something that maybe the planning commission. Should look at, right, and come back with a recommendation to the city council. So, uh, something you can.
Right.
And then the advantage we have with Josh is because of this project, uh, you know, he'll be coming back here. You know, with the bins and so on and so forth, so then we can attach traffic calming and then he can give us an update.
You can probably put funding for it as well as giving the planning event.
Sounds good. Thank you, good discussion, thank you very much. All right, our next agenda item is, uh, regarding the, uh, discussion decision regarding the draft reasonable accommodation ordinance. So, you know, is that something?
Yeah, that's actually, we have a Trevor on there and.
Trevor, no.
There she is, okay. Okay, where are you at?
Good evening, um. So this is another one of our housing grant tasks that we, that the planning commission's been working on. Uh, there's a policy in the housing element that directs the city to make some zoning ordinance amendments to. Um, comply with state laws regarding housing, one of those is the Fair Housing Act. Um, which requires cities to make reasonable accommodations for. People with disabilities so that they have the same access to housing as anyone else, so. That's what this ordinance does, it would be amendment to the zoning ordinance and, um, for tonight, it's, it, I'm not proposing a first reading, this is just a discussion. Item, um, to get questions and comments and feedback from the city council, um, it does follow, um. There's a lot, other reasonable accommodation ordinances, so we use that as a model, it's, it's fairly standard language in terms of the findings and, and procedures and things like that. Um, it does provide for an administrative. Procedure for requests that don't need any kind of discretionary review. But realistically in Trinidad, most projects would require design review anyway, so then the reasonable accommodation would be considered along with that. Um. Permit, uh, hearing and, and process. I'm just, a classic example would be a, a. A wheelchair access ramp that doesn't meet setbacks, and we actually have had those kinds of requests before in the city, but we don't have a good process. Um, to allow that, we don't have any. Uh, procedure for exceptions to the zoning ordinance other than a variance and variances. Are not really, don't really work for those situations because they're supposed to be limited to. Um, physical limitations on a property, so, um. So, yeah, so the, the planning commission worked on this ordinance for a while, we. I've sent a copy to the coastal commission, um, I haven't gotten official comments back, but. Again, it's pretty standard language that's been used in other ordinances, it looks like it's likely to be. A minor amendment, uh, my plan is, um, in the next few months to. Come back with three housing related amendments, uh, you saw, uh, one several months ago that updated definitions for state laws. Um, that's, that primarily, um, but also the coastal commission hasn't. Certified the city's codification of its ordinances, so we always have to use a dual numbering system. And the definitions aren't numbered, so it makes our amendments difficult. So I'm going to prepare an amendment. To certify the codification, the numbering of, of the city's ordinances, so, um, and we'll probably look at. All three of those amendments together, but as separate parts, um, but submit it all as one amendment to the coastal commission, then they can separate it in different parts if they need to, but. Um, so that's my plan going forward, um. Once I get comments, um, and questions from the city council, um, if you're happy with the ordinance, then I would send it to. To the city attorney and then. Prepare it for a first reading along with the other amendments.
All right, thank you, Trevor. I'm kind of familiar with this from, uh, the time that I spent on the planning commission, so I don't have any questions, does any of the other councillors have a question as well?
I don't. When you say there's zoning administrator, that's, I mean, I would think that would be probably the city manager, just anybody that's chosen by the council to do that job, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, um, the, a previous, the previous zoning amendment that I mentioned that you saw a few months ago. That had a bunch of updated definitions, one of the definitions is zoning administrator, and so that's whoever's designated. By the city council, um, could be the city manager, could be myself.
Yeah.
Often it's a planning director, um, but the city doesn't have a planning director, so, um.
So this person who's zoning administrator would have, uh, be able to make certain decisions without going to city council, is that right?
Yes, so it would not go before the planning commission or city council or public. Uh, but, but reasonable accommodation. Uh, determinations are still appealable, so some, if someone didn't like the decision one way or the other, they could appeal that staff decision.
So we, we'd be able to be, put it out in public, so this is going to be something that's going to go on the city assessor. Or that this kind of manager or this person just say, oh, we're gonna do it.
Well, there, there would be a process, so they would fill out an application, um. You know, it'd go through, uh, the standard process for referrals, um, it would need a building permit, um, that sort of, that sort of thing.
Okay. Um, is this something that anybody, is it a homeowner would apply for this? Or is there other ways of? Asking about getting this done, getting one of these projects put together?
So it could be a homeowner, it could be a tenant, it could be, um. An, an organization on behalf of, of someone, but, uh, there is a requirement that the home is. Occupied by a disabled person. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they have to live there full-time, um, it could be. You know, maybe it's a family member of somebody, something like that, um, so, yeah, so basically anybody could make the request on behalf of a, a disabled person. Um, if, if the home is occupied by the person. Um, conditions can be added to the approval, um, and generally they don't run with the land, so. The, the improvement would have to be removed. Um, should the disabled person stop occupying the residence.
My last question is, um. Under findings, it says the requested accommodation will not pose negative financial or administrative burden of the city, now I wonder how. How the city could ever get into a financial burden when this. Absolutely be covered by. For, for any costs and everything, I, I just, I don't know why that wasn't there.
It's a, it's part of the fair housing laws, um, so. The city has to make reasonable accommodations unless, um. There's the one about the financial burden, there's also the one about would it frustrate or impede, you know, implementation of cities, city programs. Um, but yes, I did read some legal, um. Cases on, on some of these and it, it would be very difficult to prove a financial hardship, that's not really an issue that comes up. Um, but something about frustrating city laws, um, or policies. Could come up, uh, one of the examples we talked about at the planning commission, for example, so someone could ask for. Uh, a reduction in the required number of parking spaces, for example, um. To accommodate something else, I'm not, you know, I don't know in what sense that would come up, but. You know, we were talking about, well, could, could this be a loophole for STRs, um, for example, to reduce their, their parking because they want to be able to. Rent to disabled people and, and I think, you know, one of the primary purposes of our STR regulations is. To make sure parking is not a burden on the neighborhood, and so. To make that finding, I think, you know, we couldn't make that finding because it wo- would frustrate a city policy or, or program, so. Um, that's one example where that finding might come into play.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments, okay, I will go to public, uh, questions or comments. All right, Trevor, I don't see any other questions or comments, so I think, um, at this point then, uh, we, um. Since our note suggested changes, is that?
No, that's the cursor, yeah.
That's the cursor, oh, my, that, that got us last one. Um, so we will, I guess, expect this then, uh, to come back after the attorneys reviewed it for a first reading, is that correct?
That's correct, and I'll likely bring it with a, a suite of other fairly minor amendments as well.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, our next, uh, item on our agenda for this evening is the continued discussion decision regarding the draft contract agreement to provide supplemental public safety services. Uh, by Pacific Coast Security, so we do have, I think, a slide. For that discussion. Gave, and I guess, um, I'll. Did you have anything you wanted to say about this, Eli, before I started, or do you want to? Want me to cover?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, say that, uh, you know, we've been looking at possible. Security to help supplement our sheriff's contract, especially in light of the fact that. We haven't been able to have a designated deputy on the ground in the city, so, uh, between. The, uh, private security and also possibly the, uh, unit ambassador program, hoping to have some people on the ground. Rest issues that may come up.
Thank you, yeah, so this is, um, some of you may recall, we discussed. Uh, we had, uh, Gene Bass, the president of, uh, Pacific Coast Security here a few months back, months back, presented, um. The idea is that, you know, there's a shortage of law enforcement officers, and so what we were really looking to do here is fill the gap, so, you know, as Eli says, we. We currently have, uh, support from law enforcement, it's got, uh, three, you know, uh, patrols on average per day. And they respond, uh, twenty-four seven if somebody calls, so that's, that's good. But what we're finding, what we're refining is that there were some hotspots around town, and specifically in areas like the library, the museum. Uh, most recently Murphy's, the post office, et cetera, so we're. We think that we would like to have to pilot a program where we had private security. So we're, we think that we would like to have to pilot a program where we had private security. And so, uh, on the slide, you'll see that it was part-time coverage, so it's around four to six hours staggered shifts. Um, I included the cost and we'll do five days a week to start. And the total pilot for 90 days is roughly $15,000, so it's, it's very affordable. And we can see, um, we can see how this works for us. So the scope is going to include, um, things like, uh, providing a visible presence in areas, uh, you know, these folks will be seen, uh, around the library and the museum, for example, during business hours, um, and even off hours. Um, they'll patrol and observe, you know, any kind of strange or abnormal behavior and report it to the police and bring the police in as needed. I think they can coordinate well with the ambassadors as well as we bring those folks on board. And, uh, they can work together and then they'll offer advice to local businesses. Um, I know in meetings I've had with them, they've been really good at giving advice about what you should do in your place of business to prevent crime. So they can, they have the time to spend with local business owners on things like that. Um, so I think, you know, the last time we spoke about this, um, we had, uh, mentioned that we've included a pilot in the budget, so we have budget for that today. Uh, but as Eli said, you know, to do anything, uh, more long-term, we probably need to organize any funding. So I'm going to pause there and see first if there are any questions or comments from the council.
You said one question, said five days a week, does that include weekends?
Yes, so we're, it's going to be staggered, so it'll be different times of day, different days of the week. We're, we're not, uh, telling anyone about this one.
And when would this, so let's say it gets approved tonight, I'm just thinking out loud, so three months. Um, I'd sure like to see at least something in June or July, right? Our busiest time, uh, for activity in the city.
I believe Gene said, once we give him the go-ahead and we'd have to, you know, contract, um, approved, it would be six weeks, I believe, for him to ramp up to make sure that he had staff on.
Okay, okay. So that takes us to May 1, May, June, July, okay.
Would we be able to request, I'd say we'd like to start at June, July, and maybe a little bit of this, Trevor. Could I, I think, I'd be a great test.
Yeah, I think we can ask for at least, you know, either late, like mid-May and to mid, all of that.
But if we approve it tonight and it's six weeks, that's May 1.
Yeah.
So we're all.
And then there's the contract process, so that'll take a few more weeks.
Yeah, is it true though, that, uh, you get more incidents, uh, during tourist months?
That's why I'm interested in June and July, that's when we have the largest activity in town. People moving through, some of these hotspots tend to kind of get more business that time of year, so, yeah.
Nice background music, awesome. Um, all right, let me, um, any other questions for the council? Uh, questions from the public, Jackie?
Just wanted to share that we do have security at the harbor. And the, uh, the security that we have are on our table. And they have their seven weeks a week. And they come in and about eight or nine and a half of the cleaning person leaves. And they can be all on until 6:00 AM. And I get a daily report from them and they indicate any contact with people involved. And then what we, um, have been enforcing is that there's no, um, public camping or walking on the beaches or anything like that after 9:00 PM. Because that's usually when problems begin to happen. We have a lot of them listening at the restaurants, um, watching that. Um, it, you know, if it's an out-of-town pub and they just want to take a quick walk on the pier, that kind of thing, that, you know, the security, you know, accommodates that, but it's really helped a tremendous amount. And, um, we have three people that rotate the shifts. We've also had some, um, gasoline cycling and damage to a vehicle up on the ranch area. So they're also doing two drive series from the harbor up to the ranch area twice during the same hours. So I was just thinking it would be important to share that with you. Because you're, if you do engage in the security, you would know that it work harder than the harbor from, say, 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM.
And are there, are there certain times that, have you seen any patterns and, you know, weekends versus summer versus like, are there kind of high?
I can only summarize the days get longer.
Makes sense.
But, you know, there is a huge need for your investor program, the folks looking to find a place to park and camp and be even on foot. But we, you know, we just were immediately to the humble county sheriff's office. If our security person is not in a problem, he knows to call right away. And it's been working well.
Didn't you start, I'm sorry, when did you start that?
Oh, we've been doing that for a number of years.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten really fine tuned though, and I think people know that, you know, once that, that presence is there, you'll really begin to see results. So I wanted to encourage you and Cheryl.
Thank you very much. Are there any other thought or comments?
I'll do, uh, I'm very grateful to be, um, start, I mean, the four row of windows were in the perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, all these stuff, but thank you. This is, it's been a huge, huge thing for us back there behind the Chevron station. Where people work.
Yeah, it's taken, taken a while because, you know, it's something new. So Bryce, did you want to add something?
Yeah, Bryce, can you get, I was just gonna second what's been said and, uh, seems like it's worth a try. Do the pilot program, see where it goes and.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so I'll bring it back to the council, this one, I think we do need a decision whether or not to proceed.
I move that we, uh, approve a three-month trial project with private security Pacific Coast and encourage the councillors and public to really weigh in on the effect of this project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, pass it to me now honestly, thank you. Thank you, thank you for your patience. Something new, so I really appreciate that, and, and yeah, excited to see how this goes. Um, all right, I think we are, uh, we skipped item number five, so we're on item number six. And that is the discussion of the trails, the closure of Axolígra Trail and the Parker Creek Trail. And I'm afraid I am going to recuse myself, uh, from this discussion after, um, I don't know how, how, do you want to explain that, Eli, or do I need to explain it or just recuse?
Yeah, well, uh, you went to check with the city attorney. And he felt like you, you could or you could not, it's up to you, but, uh, you know, it seems like since you, you're right by the, one of the trails, uh, you know, it just seemed like it would be better.
Yeah, I just felt that, you know, one of the trails is, is actually crosses our, our land, our private land. And we are working on an easement with the city and other, uh, agencies. And, you know, we decided today, I decided today to check and, and I just feel like, uh, more comfortable if I just go ahead and look. That way there's absolutely no question what's allowed, so. So.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Cheryl. So yeah, I'm, uh, uh, basically, if we could have just a brief summary of our reasons that we closed the trail, the insurance considerations, so on and so forth, then we'll leave it, uh, I'll leave the discussion.
Okay.
So on, uh, this particular item, as far as the Axolígra Memorial Trail and Parker Creek Trail uh, being closed, uh, to Old Combe Beach. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update, we had talked about it at the last council meeting a couple of weeks ago. So, uh, last Wednesday, uh, three members of the coastal commission along with myself uh, walked along the beach and saw several areas of erosion, um, one right by Parker Creek Trail and another one right by the foot of, uh, the Axolígra Memorial Trail. And then in between, you could see where there were cer- certain areas where there was some erosion, uh, that had happened. And as a result, uh, talking with the coastal commission, because, you know, we, we do, uh, you know, appreciate and enjoy in California having, uh, public access to beaches. Uh, versus like on the east coast where a lot of the beaches are privately owned. So as a result, that is one of our primary concerns. But we also are concerned about safety and even Axolígra Trail, just trying to get down at the bottom and back up is a challenge and Parker Creek Trail with everything that's happened with the, uh, with a- all of the lumber and rocks and everything else is, is also a challenge, let alone the erosion that's happening. So anyway, we walked and we, we looked at it, we were talking about some possible measures. And then tomorrow, uh, in the, uh, morning, uh, Steve Allen, our city engineer, will be going there for a second time and look at everything. And he'll be accompanied this time by Giovanni, who was a geologist from SHN. Uh, Giovanni had prepared a report back in 2004 about that beach area. And then, uh, we're also, Trevor will be joining us, uh, our planner, and then I'll be down there also. So we'll be walking and looking at it and trying to consider what I would con, uh, call a short-term, uh, option to try to make it, uh, safe and, uh, protected, uh, and, uh, and hopefully open in May, I mean, possibly before, but hopefully not later. Uh, and, uh, and then at the same time, uh, we'll possibly consider a mid-range 20-year solution and then in the future, we'll be looking at a longer range, uh, solution. Certainly with sea level rise, uh, the water is getting further up the, uh, slopes. And as a result, is eroding more of, uh, that, uh, slope area. So, uh, we, we would like to get a, a, a short-term fix in there and then, uh, start considering some longer term. So I'll, you know, entertain any questions, comments that, that anyone has. And I just wanted to update everyone, the fact that, uh, we went down with the coastal commission last week, that we're going to be addressing it, uh, this week, uh, tomorrow. The, the engineer, from an engineering perspective, and the geologist from a rare perspective. And, uh, and then we're also talking about it at a future, uh, CHRI management team meeting, uh, where we have people from the coastal conservancy, uh, also present to, uh, address the station.
Thank you, Eli, for that. And, and just to, to reiterate the fact that, you know, what we're talking about is really, um, a, a topic that's been sort of on everybody's mind, but was sort of sped up by this winter series of storms that really exposed that whole home beach, um, the transition between the beach and the land now is, is moved back. Um, the stability of accessing that area. Um, and it just, again, what we're talking about here is a short-term and a midterm. The coastal resiliency discussion, that's so far down the road in terms of what might be available to us for long-term. But we really need something in the short-term, which is what we're asking for. Um, that we are, you know, talking about, one, you know, safety, city property, also, um, the entire culturally significant study area is, is part of this. And so there's so many factors in play that we just want to make sure that folks are known, folks are aware of what we're doing and what our timeline is, right? So that's what we're here to discuss tonight, is short-term with some ideas towards mid, you know, what 20-year, I think, is, is a nice, something we can wrap our heads around, um, you know, not the, not the 2090 story that we're hearing about and so on and so forth. So anyway, that's what, um, that's what we're discussing and so thanks for the preamble, we'll start with the council. Katie?
One question, in any chance of grants or funds for the short-term, uh, showing up of?
Uh, probably not for the short-term, but definitely for the medium range, which would be up to 20 years. And then, and then the long-range one is actually something that can be considered as part of the Ocean Protection Council grant that we have, which is already going on, the Coastal Resilience Plan. We even have a meeting, uh, this Thursday afternoon with Coastal Resilience Plan on a staff level.
And that's for long-term?
That's, that's for long-term. And it's just for planning and it's, uh, somewhere around $440,000, I believe, in that range of, um, money that the state has given us to strictly look at planning for.
Not doing the planning.
Yeah, not doing, but just planning for, uh, sea level rise for erosion. So that, that would be more of the long-term, uh, way to address it. And then the medium range will search out for grants. But the short-term, the issue we have there is that we would like to have, uh, something in place within the next couple of months.
Uh, and just, did he have funds for that or do we have an estimate?
Yeah, well, again, as far as we will be with the engineer and then also the geologist, get a little bit of idea of what could be done that may be feasible. And then after that, we quantify it. Uh, we, we do have, you know, some ability to do certain things, uh, but one thing that we do have, which I consider it like a rainy day fund, but what, what it is is specifically from our insurance company, when we transitioned from the prior CARSAF to the current SURA, uh, there was some funds that each city got. And we have a pool of around $79,000 that we can be spending on whatever we feel like we need to do other than salaries and other than legal claims. So, so that's one, one part that we could look at. And then we do have money for trails, uh, that, uh, we have, uh, probably close to 30,000 as far as trails because we've dedicated about 10,000 each year for the past few years. So, so those are a couple of options. And then who knows if, uh, the coastal conservancy, uh, and, and some other entities may be able to weigh in with some money. The coastal conservancy does have some money for, uh, coastal access that, uh, they, they could, you know, tap into. And they've also talked with the, uh, uh, with the CHRI specifically, when we do have the CHRI management team meetings and indicated that there is approximately $30,000 that could be available, you know, for whatever needs to be done, uh, you know, as far as.
Well, then it concerns me, uh, is the short-term fix, because I was down there, I walked it too, and it's, it's bad. But, uh, and the storms are still coming, uh, so we say we throw 30,000 at it or pick a number. And then next winter, it's all on again.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, you know, with, with mother nature, it's hard to really try to do something too long-term unless we have any other solution, which could possibly entail bringing in material, maybe from Eureka, which would be like larger rocks and whatever that could be placed around that area. Uh, other than that, uh, I mean, even the coastal commission, a lot of times they talk about what's called coastal retreat. Uh, and, uh, so, so there are some areas of things that, that you just can't deal with, with mother nature, it's just going to happen. Uh, and, but then there are some areas that we have to deal with because otherwise we create further erosion with the hillsides and the homes higher up and so on. So we might have to pick and choose here and there. But, uh, but yeah, certainly from an engineering, geologist background, planning background, all of those will look at it in different ways. And then keeping the coastal commission and coastal conservancy involved since their, uh, focus is, uh, well, the coastal commission with just the whole coast itself and the coastal conservancy with access to the, uh, the coast.
Jack, for, uh, for a quick, um, solution that's cheap, uh, what about sandbags? Maybe ask the geologists, yes, tomorrow?
Uh, okay.
Maybe make a sandbags staircase, maybe.
Right.
Protect that area, put sands there and you can just build.
Yeah.
And, and you bring up a good point, Mr. Tuttle, I just want to kind of keep everybody that, you know, the, the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust has an annual or every couple of years, it's already sort of baked into their schedule that we need to maintain our, our access to the beach every couple of years or every year in some cases. So they're always doing community-led efforts for low cost. And they don't have any intention or illusions that's going to be there next year. But it's done every, you know, every year to, to keep their, their accesses safe and to keep their, you know, their. But it's done every, you know, every year to to keep their their accesses safe and to keep their, you know, their trails from being unnecessarily undercut, right? I mean, this this advancement of the, what was it called coastal advancement? Anyway, we're not going to stop the ocean, but we're going to at least cajole it to do something less damaging is what what we're trying for in the short term. So other councillors or questions, comments?
We have a little taste of anything we could do as a city council.
That's what I'm saying is that.
We could all meet and have a nice time.
No, we can't because that violates the. I don't, I don't want to blame. But I mean, it's just, it's something that we're we're thinking about. That's what this meeting is in, you know, tomorrow with the. Management team and all these different things to, there's a lot of really smart, you hear me say this all the time. There's a lot of really smart people in this community. Let's start putting that to to the task and figure out ways that we can mitigate again the short term, medium and long. So.
I bet they work this too on holidays because they they're really good at getting the word out. They get lots of people. Almost anybody wants to can just sign up and help out and so it's actually a really good community to do that.
Land Trust.
Oh, the land trust.
Yeah, the land trust.
I have a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
They actually, you have two trails, does. Actually, going to be a really tough job, you can get that on a short term, or is it something you can be, or you look at it?
Yeah.
It was if we have the Parker Creek. Seems like it could be done, but is the Axol? Even look like it could be finished in short term?
Yeah, it's it's hard to say specifically because that also goes through the twelve and a half acre. Area, the. City area. So so we naturally have to get way in. Both the CHRI and the Yurok regarding that trail. The the erosion, when you look from the foot of the trail. The erosion is like more, I believe it was more like just to the left of it. And and there has been, I guess, some consideration in the past about we of moving the trail. So maybe moving the trail might make more sense so that we don't have that much than. You know, damage at the toe of the trail. And and even the temporary steps that are.
Cable and logs?
Cable and the logs. Yeah, I mean, that that's pulled off to the side. You know, it's 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 not in in place properly anymore. So it looks like one of the steps has been, you know, twisted out.
Like I see us concentrating on Parker Creek and that we can get that.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
And what I believe we're working towards, Eli, correct me if I'm wrong, is is at the April meeting, we'll have a significant update, right? Recommendations from the engineers. The engineers know that we're not, this is something that's very important to us in the short term to at least have some. You know, some answers to what could be done. And what's likely to be cost effective and so on and so forth. And the management team, I believe you're meeting with them soon too.
Yeah, yeah, possibly next week, yeah.
So, okay. Let's go with public comment. I see Karen, your little yellow hand is up.
Well, thank you. I keep forgetting to put it down, so I'll lower it right now. But yes, I just wanted to. Offer up that there's a lot of us that love that beach. And many of us would volunteer to help any restoration. I and I know many people that would help. So maybe that would help to phrase some costs. So, you know, I don't know if that's an option from a liability standpoint, but. Please keep that in mind. And then secondarily. You know, a lot of people are wondering what's happening and I don't know if you would consider putting some sort of communication board. Down at the lowest part of the trailhead so people. Know who cross over and still go down or decide to turn around. Which would be the right thing to do would. Have some assurance of what's happening. Communication is the bane of our life. And I think that would be a really helpful. Point to be able to let folks who are walking down there somehow know what's going on. Thank you.
Great suggestion. And that's definitely part of. These next series of meetings is to gather that information so that we can give folks, you know, more than just. We're looking into it, right? We've looked into it at this, right? So we'll have a much more detailed update coming up. Ms. Provolts?
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak to this matter. I just would like to have. I know it's very difficult. We're we're coming up toward a very high tourism season for Trinidad. And we all love our beaches. You know, they're they're just why we live here, why people come here. But I think if we just be patient and understand the importance of of. Working with the coastal commission, working with the city, working with the Trinidad, the CHRI management team. And finding a good plan so that can be sustainable. For the short term and then eventually the long term. I think we'll be successful if we just have a little patience. And I know that's very difficult. We all love the beach. We all want to get down there. I was down there recently and, you know, there's lots of traffic, even though the the stairs are really difficult to go down. There are people who still want to travel to get to the beach. So if we can just all support. A pause on using those trails until a solution is found. I think it would be beneficial for the whole program. You know, we we need to support the efforts the city is doing right now. With the coastal commission and all those involved. And so, you know, I support the city in in taking the steps. To to close the trails right now until solutions are found. And that's all I ask is is all the Trinidad residents be patient and support this action. And hopefully we come up with a plan soon. Thank you.
Ms. Provo? Uh, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Hello? I just wanted to remind respectfully, remind the city. That the rancher has asked for communication, anything to do with with the village. And I'm glad that I was able to hear the efforts tonight and. I will relay that back to our tribal council, but I believe they would be supportive. Closing the trails and, you know, the rancher has requested membership on the CHRI management team. And that is, you know, another topic. However, I think that CHRI management team. I'm hoping will be a public meeting next week when you when you hold it. Because I believe that was the decision being made that there would be a public meeting. Each time there was a team. Just in general and respectfully reminder, the rancher is a huge part in this whole effort in town. And I have relayed that information to tribal council and get back to you, Eli. But I believe they are supportive because they also are aware of the huge. Some of the stairwells nation. Please communicate with the rancher on all of this.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah, and and those meetings would be open except if they are going to talk about cultural resources. Other than that, that's the only time that they'd be closed.
But there could be a section that was open to talk about the mitigation on the trails.
Okay, well, and and just to be clear, right, we're we're in the, what is it, the information collecting? So we're not going to do anything until we bring it back to, that's why I want to make sure everybody knows that our intention is to bring this back to the April meeting. So that if any, any decisions are being made, it's in a public setting. Right?
It would just be nice to have a public portion of that team to to talk, to hear about the recommendations, not the cultural resources.
Agreed. I thought I saw an iPhone trying to talk. I'm not sure. There's more public comment on the Zoomosphere?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Adora King. And you were talking about the smart people in town that can figure this out. This is one of the dumb people in town calling in. But it seems to me, I don't do the trail anymore. But I I think, you know, the stairs that you talk about, I've. I think I pretty much understand what that is. It seems like we keep trying to build on top of the ground. Every time we try to repair one of the edge of these. Stairwells and we're building on the same thing that washes away underneath all the time. So. That doesn't seem to be working for us. And the only thing that I can see every day. Is a pier out in the ocean on pylons. I think that's what they're called. That has a heck of a lot of water hitting it. And it does washed away. So would it be possible, they probably can't reach the Axol Lindgren. Base. I don't know how you would get there, but you can get down Parker Creek Trail. With some equipment to pound some very short pylons into the sand, not that they're sticking up. And the Parker Creek Trail has been designated as the secondary or the primary, excuse me, the primary trail. So if they could at least fix that one, and I say I call it that because that was decided in the lawsuit. That named Parker Creek, it was, we were told to name. Parker Creek as a primary trail. But if they could at least pound some low pylons in. And maybe have like some decking that went out that even had like a weight or even something that could be set at different levels. I think that would stay, but that's my engineering comment. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Adora. Other public comment? Mr. Kenny?
Promise to be the last thing I talk about tonight. It was the thing that attracted my attention to the agenda. Because I love the trail system we have here in Trinidad. I'm so proud that we were, I believe we were the first city in California to get their local coastal program certified. Way back in early nineteen eighties. Who did that trail component in there? To take care of those trails and make sure we keep that as an amenity. Or not just us now, but for future generations to use those trails. And really, when you think about it, a trail is something that happens when people walk across the. That's how they come into existence on the most basic level. Sure, they can be enhanced and. Also, it's a. Other things can be brought to bear stairways and cable stairs and all that kind of stuff. Or really, if you just let people walk to the beach. A trail will develop, you know. And. So it's a little concerning, the sort of trend I've been noticing. The last few years of wanting to close trails in Trinidad, including the Van Wick Trail. That's, you know, was supposed to be a temporary closure. How many years ago now is that? So I'm I'm very sensitive to this idea about temporary closures and. Closing trails in general. So I'm looking forward to. The Axol Lindgren Trail and Parker Creek Trail. Get back to the service as soon as possible. In the short term, it won't require any super fancy technological approaches, you know, it won't work. Let people walk there and the trail will. Will embed itself into the into the ground. And a little mention was made of. The Triancestral Society, Yurok Tribe, and the Rancheria. I believe your policy sixty nine, your general plan. Typically mentions the Rancheria as one of the entities that always has to be consulted. Anything to do with the twelve acre area. So. Beware of that. That's that's in black and white there. And also a little puzzled by the concern of our insurance. Company about liability to the city because. The government code specifically exempts cities from liability. For any any kind of trail that goes to a beach or a riverfront. Any kind of recreational trail, you've got complete immunity from design defects and natural conditions. And so I don't really understand why the insurance company is is concerned about that.
Yeah, it'd be only one they ever told us that needed to be closed was the Van Wick Trail. But maybe because that's not one of the ones that actually, the others go directly to the beach and directly out.
Yes, that's.
Because even with Axol Lindgren, all they wanted was a really long sign. With about eight or nine different points saying, you know, at your own risk, you know, there's so on and so forth. But they didn't want us to close.
But they but they did, did they tell us we have to close the Axol Lindgren and Parker Creek?
No, not not to the insurance.
I'm very glad you're all working on it and I'm encouraged that some simplicity can be found. For the short, medium, and hopefully the long term.
Thank you very much. Any last comments from the public?
If you're backing on what Bryce said about that we're not liable insurance wise, which I I thought we were. So I'm glad to hear that that's not the case. Trails are massive. So. Do trails have to be closed? Can't they just be posted? Damage to the entrance or of the access to the beach, go at your own risk?
I think the the city really felt, and I'm saying this, the conversations I've been part of anyway. Is the damage was so severe. That it was now past our sort of comfort level of saying. Let's not encourage people to go to a place that is just so poorly or is is so damaged.
That's why I say the posted, that it is damaged and it will be difficult to access, be aware.
Right. And I think while we were coming up with a plan. Whether it be to leave it closed or to do some work on it or let it just be a naturally difficult trail. I think that's what we're asking for in this period is let us wrap our heads around what can be done, what needs to be done. And then go from there. And there were just more questions than answers.
What happened there? That was my question. We were just asking. We're asking for a, just we're just getting a discussion, so we're not making any decisions. But what would be your solution if you were? If you talk about possibly closing that. What would you actually do on these trails? Do if we if we should let us close, what would you? What mod would you do?
What we currently have, which are the the barricades. So we have a series of three barricades with saying trail closed on all three barricades.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Was it, I'm trying to remember, did we vote on this, closing it or it was just done right after the storms?
It was done because a thirty day emergency. And now we're asking to keep it closed for another month while we assess. That's what we're asking.
But is it, is it worth considering on some other avenue? Because people are still going down there. And it doesn't have to be closed.
But we also are, we're also a member of the CHRI management team, you know, CHRI management team. Recommended also that it be closed. So so we're we're just trying.
Creek access.
Yeah, right, you're right.
That's all.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Pass the water, not anything, this is just.
Yeah, I'll see. Yeah, exactly.
We are getting the, you know, getting the temperature, if you will.
Yeah, and I just wanted to keep the public aware because, you know. Trails, number one, and coastal access, number two. Are both very important, not only for our residents but visitors. So as a result, I just wanted to keep everyone up to speed as to what we're doing proactively to to help address this. So I'll have a much better idea after tomorrow, after I talk with, have the engineer and the geologist. Like I said, our engineer has already gone down there with me, but the geologist hasn't. And especially because he has addressed that area before and done a report on it in the past. I want him to look at it and see what suggestions that maybe he could come up with along with our engineer. And and then also having a planner there because she's the one that. And uh, and, and then also having a planner there because she's the one that does the CDP, the coastal development permit that uh, needs to be in place as well. So, but yeah, we're, we're proactively trying to find uh, what needs to be done in order to uh, safely have people down.
Any other uh, closing questions, comments from the council and then I'll bring it back to the public? Back to the public?
I just was wondering if a Rancheria representative could attend that walkthrough?
Sure.
What time is that be?
Yeah, at eleven o'clock.
I'm not sure if I have anyone, but I do.
Where are you meeting? At Town Hall?
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the discussion. Um, and really look forward to um, hearing, you know, what happens tomorrow with the management team and so on and so forth. Ideas, we're always welcome to, or we're always interested in ideas, uh, what can be done. Um, and I'm, I'm also hearing a lot of interest in volunteerism to, to do some work. So that, that could be a, actually, that could be a really positive uh, effect of this, of this discussion. So with that, that ends our discussion items, uh, future agenda items. Any future agenda items for consideration?
Oh, and then uh, we'll have to let Cheryl know she wants to come in for this part.
Oh, I'll touch you.
Oh, no.
She's been in the back in this whole time.
Yes, that's. She's, she's in the civic club room. Yeah.
Nothing, nothing. Well, so we're getting Cheryl's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was in the civic club.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I thought she, I saw her.
I, I think she, she initially said she was gonna stick around, but then I think she probably got a text from her husband showing the, the fireplace glowing and the dog wagging its tail. Peace out. So future, that's what I got. So uh, future agenda.
I got one. And I can find out what's happening with the staff. In terms of getting somebody out to work on that.
Okay, thank you. We do like to talk about stuff. Other future agenda items? Any public uh, interest for agenda items? All right, with that. Bryce, I gotta move it. Bryce speeds. Yeah.
Since you brought it up, it's been driving me crazy for years now. At the end of Ocean Avenue, Ocean Ham, there's a invasive species shrub of some kind that would, the city always cut it down so it was level with the, the level of the big rock stone there with the black end.
Oh, right, right.
And it's growing up higher and higher and higher. It's it's just, yeah, it just needs to be cut down, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Back down to the level of the, of the rock. I would do it. If you guys would give me permission, I would just do it.
I think we'll have our public works.
Yeah.
No, no, I, Bryce, there are alder trees that I've grown up in that garden in front of my house and I just, I have these nightmares of re-clipping it and, and getting up in the pokey because I'm cutting down trees in Trinidad. So we'll have our public work.
Trees, they're the shrub.
Well, it sounds like it's, it needs work, so.
So I, thanks for that opportunity.
Probably won't be an agenda item, but we'll work on that. I just want to be clear. All right, with that. For a journey.
Recording stop.